Thank you so much. What we have tonight is our second in this series of work sessions as we move toward a formal decision on which option you like from the environmental impact statement. So I'm going to do a recap of our November 28th work session. Then we're going to have about a 10-minute PowerPoint presentation on the traffic volume and traffic projections. I know that there were a number of councilors that inquired about that and what you wanted some more detailed information on that. So I'm going to do that. And then Dave Simmons, our consultant, is going to do a review of the alternatives, which is something else that the council wanted. You know, what are all the options? And then how we built from alternative 4A to alternative 4D. And so Dave will be presenting that. And then we'll want to get into the council discussion for the bulk of the evening. Okay. So on November 28th, we had an excellent work session. And I think the reason people were so excited about the work session is that council really got to dialogue. And it's so rare. Usually our work sessions are death by PowerPoint. And that's why I've stayed with my low-tech paper, because I think that, you know, provides for more discussion and less slide review. So I'm sticking with this for the rest of our work sessions on this stuff. So we talked about the EIS process and how we had gotten to where we've gotten. You know, we shared that the materials are very large and very extensive. We talked about council consideration and timing, the fact that council is considering all this information, as well as all the testimony that has come before you, and that there really is no definitive timeline. Obviously, we want to get through our business. We have many other things, many other city business things that we need to do, but you really have all the time that you need to make this decision. We talked about the various options that are before you, and today you'll get more details on them. And then we kind of finished off the evening with discussing whether the council, whether there was a consensus among the council for a need for a crossing, and then what we wanted to accomplish with that crossing. And I want to be clear, because I think there's been some confusion, that in a work session there is no final decisions made. That decision will be made at a council meeting, probably after a public hearing. But, you know, we're having this discussion, so if there's, if we had asked the question, is there consensus that we need a crossing? And the majority of the consensus was that we should not have a crossing, then we would have had a different conversation. So we need to at least have some sense that the council wants to proceed in having these conversations, or else we'd be having a different set of conversations. But I want to be clear, and I want to be clear for the audience, that no final decisions are made at council work sessions. All right. So what council talked about, that was my presentation, is council talked about what the reasons were for another crossing. And we talked about the seismic issue, the fact that the existing bridges would not be usable after a significant seismic event, that they cross floodplains, that we need to address community growth, that we need system redundancy, that, you know, the traffic volumes, the projected traffic volumes will require some additional crossings, and that we need to address alternative modes as a part of this project. We talked about the capacity of the existing bridges, talked a lot about the bridgehead engineering study and the work that we've already done to implement the recommendations of the bridgehead engineering study, the needs for freight movement, the downtown impacts of the existing bridges and whatever future bridges, and what the regional needs might be. We talked about the impacts of a new crossing, what the livability might be around those crossings, the tidal cloud, if you will, of adopting or getting a record of decision for a big project, what the economic development opportunities might be with a new bridge, both regionally and within the region of the bridge. And we talked about phasing the bridge and phasing the project and the additional planning needs that will be required, you know, beyond, there's, you know, we're heading towards a final EIS and a record of decision, but even beyond that, there'll be much more planning that needs to be done with respect to the land uses around the bridgeheads, transportation system plan amendments, UGB goal exceptions. I mean, there's just a whole host of things that will need to be done.
Just again, my name's Mike Jaffe with the Midlamont Valley Council of Governments. I've been working on these travel forecasts with the consultant team for a while and a member of the project management team. So let's get situated here. So I'm here to talk about the traffic volumes and the forecasts. This first graph shows the volumes on the two bridges combined. So I'm going to use this pointer here. You can see, this is the line that shows the total volumes on the two bridges. That number was fairly flat, below 50,000 in the 80s, started climbing in 1990 to 61,000 between 90 and 2006, climbed to over 88,000. And hit this here, about a 27,000 volume increase in that time, 45 percent. But then after that, since its peak in 2006, it dropped about 5,000. So I'm going to focus first on some of the reasons why the traffic volumes may have dropped in the last five years since the 2006 peak. So what you have here is also travel volumes on various roads. This is the bridges. The blue line is Wallace Road, just south of Glen Creek, and this green line is Highway 22 near the Oak Knoll Golf Course. So as you can see, the blue line on Wallace Road, starting here in the 90s, has gradually gone up, up, there's some up and downs. Around here in the peak of 2006, it was about 38,000 or 39,000. And hit that again. In this period here where the volumes dropped, there was a dip, but then traffic volumes have started going back up, so we're back to just under 40,000. And a little bit of contrast, volumes on the Highway 22 leading to the bridges from places like Dallas and whatnot have peaked in 2006, dropped, technology here, declined, and then by about 3,000, and then stayed flat since then. So part of that 5,000 volume drop is partly due to the drop coming in from Dallas, Monmouth, Independence, or travel from the coast, to and from the coast. I'm going to talk about some likely reasons for the decrease in bridge volumes, the signs to the location of those. So let's first look at unemployment. That's one factor. So Polk County unemployment line is this orange line. It was around 5 percent in 2008. It jumped to over 9 percent in 2009 and has steadily decreased, but it's about 8 percent A second reason is the decline in West Salem residential construction. So this is building permits from the City of Salem. The blue line are single-family residential. The green line are total units from multifamily building permits. So during the 90s to about 2006, we have a range of from 200 to 500, or almost 500, new housing units each year in West Salem. Quite a bit of growth. Then, starting in 2007 with the recession, building permits dropped dramatically, and you can see it's stayed low since then. Gas prices. No one needs to know that gas prices have been bouncing up and down. Here's Salem's particular gas prices. So here we have this up-and-down roller coaster of gas prices until 2008 where it hit over $4 a gallon, a sharp decline in the recession. And then since then, the increase between $2 and $3, getting up to $3 where we are now, we're over $3. Finally, travel behavior. SCATS does a household travel survey. We did one in 2010. So one question we asked of the people we surveyed was, as a result of the current recession, what changes have you made in regards to your daily routine? And I'm going to show you the answers here. So the people we surveyed, 34 percent said, no change, didn't make any changes. 24 percent said they traveled less, or they forego travel, didn't go wherever they used to go. Some took, traveled to closer destinations or made shorter trips. Many people combined and chained trips, meaning instead of crossing the bridge maybe eight times during the day for all these activities, combining these trips, combining shopping trips or all their trips. Some took a different mode, 6 percent, and then some just said other. So with that background, let me talk a little bit about the forecast on the Salem bridges. As you know, forecasts originally come from the state of Oregon, are assigned to counties, and then counties are responsible for coordinating those forecasts to the cities. So a big determinant of travel is the amount of population growth you're expecting in your cities and counties. So this chart shows some historical and future population, starting with Polk County. So here we are in 2010, 75,000 population for Polk County, 117,000 is the forecast. And that's for the cities, the counties, the entire county. Next, we have West Salem, growing from 26,000 to over 42,000. Dallas and Monmouth, I combined Monmouth and Independence. So looking at West Salem, that's a 61 percent increase over 20 years. And looking at Dallas and Monmouth Independence, a 92 percent increase over 20 years. And that, those numbers come from the, from Polk County, and it's in the 2009 Polk County Transportation System Plan. The West Salem one is from the SCATS Regional Transportation System Plan. So let's look at West Salem a little more closely. In 2009, we have a land use inventory of West Salem, and we looked at available residential land. So here's West Salem, here's the high school, middle schools. All the yellow areas are parcels that are available for residential development. Some are totally vacant, some have one house on 10 acres, some have one house on three-quarters an acre and could be subdivided or parcelled. So all these yellow areas are available residential land. Then, one of the things that the regional MPO does is do forecasts coordinated with the cities and counties, of course, we don't do it alone, to look at where will growth occur. So this shows of those yellow areas, the blue areas are ones that are forecast to develop by 2035 to meet those population numbers I showed you earlier. This is a 2035 population of 44,000, but it corresponds to what I showed you before. So from all those forecasts, those are the main determinants of growth of travel on the bridges. So because of the nature of travel forecasting and the nature of the bridges in particular, we're going to focus on the peak hour travel over those bridges. So this is a chart showing, it's an older chart, but it'll, it's typical of what the peaks are, they still apply. This is showing the peak hour of volume on the bridges. So this is on the Marion Street Bridge, pretty low, in the middle of the night. This is 8:00 AM, this is midday, and this is 4:00 and 5:00. So you can see that peaking and the level of congestion that grows on Marion Street Conversely, here's the Center Street Bridge. The peak is between 7 and 8:00 in the morning, and then it drops another peak, or a smaller peak in the PM, between 5 and 6:00. So the problem on the bridges is the congestion in the peak hours, and that's what we focus on for the EIS. So we use those population and separate employment forecasts, plus forecasts of regional travel going through the area. We combine that, put that information in our travel model. And then we, the output is future year volumes on the roadway system, including the bridges. As I mentioned, we focus on the peak hour forecasts. And what I'm showing you is a graphic from the EIS showing, oops, got to go back one, showing, these are the bridges, bridge volumes. This is Wallace Road. This is Highway 22 coming in here, downtown Salem. And it's maybe a little hard to read, but this is the forecast volumes on the bridges. This is in the PM peak where Wallace Road traffic is more peak than Center Street traffic. Almost 7,000 vehicles per hour on Marion Street Bridge, about a little over 5,000 on Center Street Bridge. Now, our model actually had little higher volumes. One thing we did for the EIS is we reduced the volumes on the system by, from West Salem, by 8 percent to account for more transit, more biking, more car pools, more working from home. So the original volumes from the model were higher, but we reduced them to account for those factors. And that's all I have.
At this point, Councilor Tesler?
Thank you. So I'm looking at your model here, and I'm just curious if this model takes into effect a couple of things. This is 20, use this as your projection for 2031, correct?
Correct.
Right. So does this take into account the current transit system as it exists now? Or, I mean, what if there was better transit? I mean, what if there was a bus line, I mean, gaffs, think of these things, if there was a bus line that went from West Salem directly to the Capitol? Or some kind of thing like that that would get people, you know, around in an efficient fashion where you wouldn't have to drive your car? So I'm just trying to think about, you know, did you, is it possible to include, you know, I know that's kind of a strange adjustment to put into a model, but did you include those possibilities?
Well, the travel model does include a transit.
Okay.
So part of the trips generated do end up going to a transit line that's built within the model. And to answer your first question, I believe for the forecast, we use existing level of service of transit. However, during the course of the study, we looked at ways to potentially reduce volume on the bridges, including tripling transit service in West Salem. And while that had a small effect in the model of reducing travel over the bridges, it was fairly small. And I don't have the numbers, we can find the numbers for you, but I don't have them memorized. It was fairly small amount of reduction on the bridges.
Or something.
Well, as I mentioned, and since we are hoping that transit will grow in the future, that that's one of the reasons why we dropped the original volumes from the model by 8 percent to account for future transit.
And, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just full of questions tonight. The other question that I had when I was also considering this model and reading some other additional information was that I would be interested, this may sound like a goose chase, but I would be interested in seeing some demographic information overlay with this, with traffic volumes, because there's been a lot of discussion about how younger people do not own cars, and that the trend is kind of going towards people not owning a car and switching from not owning a car into alternate transit modes. So I guess I would be interested in seeing that, because I think that may have some influence on the future, you know, who is using a car and who is using that kind of transportation. I think that our demographics are going to show that we do not have a great younger demographic here, unfortunately, because I'm an old salt and I'm not even 50. So, sorry Chuck.
Yeah, Councilor, I just want to be clear that the model, you know, the modelers put in, you know, three times as much transit, and that generated some numbers. And then on top of that, the numbers were reduced by 8 percent to account for kind of these additional lifestyle issues. You know, our model doesn't have that kind of lifestyle. That's a very complex model that we don't run in the region. But I, my sense is that these numbers are really the lowest possible numbers that, in fact, if we don't get transit at three times higher level of service than we have today, and we don't have these lifestyle shifts, and we don't have some of these, these numbers will actually be higher in 2031 than they are today. So they are, they are in fact conservatively low, based on all of those things, not conservatively high.
Can I answer that, one more answer? So if you had a transit going over the bridge every six minutes, so let's say, or every 10 minutes, a transit line going over the bridge every 10 minutes, it was full of capacity, let's say 35 people or 50 people, that's maybe at peak capacity, 600 people on transit. Maybe you can reduce the number at maximum if you had a bus every 10 minutes, they were full to capacity, and they handled, you know, that many persons per bus, so.
Councilor Lawson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So looking at this, you know, I'm concerned about infrastructure after you get off the bridge, not necessarily about when you drive over the bridge. And the question I have is, I'm looking at, say, Liberty and Commercial, and I'm looking at Center and Marion, and I'm looking at Wallace. Are these numbers, that I can't read right now, are they, and I don't need to read them, are they over the capacity of those streets, AKA their major arterials? Are these numbers higher than what our major arterials are designed to take?
Well, I think Dave's probably better to talk about that.
Okay, and if it's going to be answered later, that's fine.
In fact, he's going to, Dave's presentation is going to get into that, but I can assure you that they are, because these numbers are significantly higher than what we're running today in Marion Street already. I don't live in West Salem, but the few times that I get stuck in that traffic, we're running four lanes, and at 5 after 5, 10 after 5, we're backed up to the Capitol Mall with four lanes, with the traffic we have today.
And that means it's overloaded?
So, yeah.
Above these?
Yeah, I mean, once, you know, any time that you see, in the simplest possible terms for traffic engineering, anytime you have to wade through one signal cycle, you're over capacity, by definition.
That, that's what I need to think of.
Yeah. So then, so then the policy question for the council becomes is, you know, you can make a policy decision that, you know, and you hear this a lot from our citizens, well, so what? You know, if you have, if you're congested for 15 minutes, or 20 minutes, or 30 minutes, you know, that's fine, and you can make that decision. At some point, then the question is, well, what is the limit? Is the limit an hour, an hour and a half, two hours of congestion? Because as the numbers go up, at some point, it becomes, today, we don't have those issues, because you're right, by 6:00 it's cleared, unless something happens and you're good. But it's a real, it's a good policy question to ask, well, what is the limit for that?
Peter, just an observation, I drove here from 16th and D., and it was, by your definition, everything was over capacity all the way here. Stop signs, stoplights, I waded through two cycles on 12th Street and Court. I waited through a full cycle at, coming along Court twice. So, and then coming Commercial to City Hall, I ran through two extra cycles. So everything, coming into and leaving the Capitol Mall was apparently out of sync.
Right. Well, it's just we're over capacity, and we know that.
Okay.
We know, we run, this is, we run this system, we know that our system runs over capacity at the peak hour, and there's nothing, you know, there's nothing inherently wrong with that, you know, we know that. I mean, to run it at capacity or below capacity, you would need many more lanes of traffic.
Well, just an observation, from 16th and D. to City Hall took me all of 17 minutes running through.
Right.
All these lights and all.
Right.
How long's it take someone then? And I'm not sure what this means in terms of...
Travel?
Yeah, travel time.
Travel time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we would have to run, there is kind of a next step for this kind of modeling, which is to do a traffic simulation model.
Okay.
Where you can actually see how vehicles start to back up, and that's something we could do, if you wanted to, it costs more money, but, but, you know, if today, you know, there is, I mean, I'm just, I really don't know what it would be. At some point, it starts, you know, there comes a point where it's just a lot, you know, so.
A lot, okay.
So, and you just have to, I mean, it's really a policy question for the council to decide. I mean, what is, what is a lot? Is it, some people might argue that 17 minutes is a lot, some people might argue that it's an hour.
Yeah.
Or two hours, or three hours. I mean, that's really, that's really the policy choice that we have to make, and we, the community makes the policy choice by how we invest our transportation dollars, how wide do we make the streets? You know, there's all those things.
Well, let me give you, a lot is $800 million.
Oh, yeah, yeah, listen, no, I'm just, I'm telling you, you know, this is...
Just to put a lot on, one definition on a lot.
No, no, I just want to, I want to be clear that, you know, what we're showing you here is, those are, those are the modeling facts. The policy decision is what you want to do about it.
Well, it's hard to do the policy decision without understanding what exactly we're after. I don't know what those numbers mean in terms of people's experience, and then what that, you know, represents in time and lost, you know, lost wages, lost time at home, all of that. That's what I'm trying to understand a little bit of, to equate with the cost of at least 4D. The other is, I noticed this one, this, it's the only other question I have right now, but this model does not show planned improvements on the west side, or presumably there are some improvements on the, or on the west side, or on the east side, particularly thinking of kind of the Marine Way and what that does. That's on the books. So I, when you modeled, did you model also with the already scheduled but unbuilt improvements that have been suggested?
Yes, yes, we did.
But what did they do to this?
Well, what we do is, in our regional plan, we have what we think is affordable by the region over 20 years. It's the projects that you've approved, and we have to kind of do a financial analysis and see what you can afford. But we include all those future year projects, Glen Creek and Wallace Road, I believe we include Marine Drive, isn't that correct, Dave? Yeah. So we included things that are in the regional plan that we expected to be built by 2031. That's all included.
So those numbers, it's hard to see when it's not there.
Yeah, you don't see...
Marine Drive.
Marine Drive, because this is kind of focusing on the major approaches to...
But this assumes some relief by Marine Drive.
Yes.
Well, I'd be interested in seeing what those numbers look like.
So the first alternative within the document is the no-build, and we've talked a lot about that. That's not necessarily doing nothing, but it's doing what's in those fiscally constrained projects that are programmed out within the 20-year horizon. Alternative 2A is the alternative that looked at widening the existing bridges. And the areas that are shaded there as well are also additional street system modifications to add capacity as well. Alternative 2B looked at building a new bridge next to the existing bridges, to shift over that, you can see the connections to Highway 22, and additional street modifications in West Salem to take that additional traffic, kind of a parallel system in West Salem to feed traffic over the new bridge over to the Liberty Commercial couplet. Now we're going to look at the new bridge crossing locations. This is alternative 3. This looked at a new bridge that connected in West Salem at the Hope Avenue location, the same as where the alternative 4 connects, but it differed in where it connected on the east Salem side, over essentially where Tryon comes in. So it's further north than alternative 4, and it connects up closer, right up with the Parkway. Alternative 4A looked at a new bridge, the same location on the west Salem side, but didn't, on the east Salem side, connected up with Liberty, excuse me, with Pine and So then in addition... So then in addition, we had these add-ons, the additional elements that came with the development of, of, of four. And let me just back up for a second, this is, I'll weave in the, how we got from four A to four D at this point. So the traffic engineers, as using the travel demand model that Mike has been talking about tonight, our goal was to look to see, how could we reduce the traffic using the existing bridges? How could we reduce that congestion on those, in the downtown? Because as you, as you all know, everything funnels down, so on Wallace Road, everything funnels down to the existing bridgeheads, and then it, on the same thing on the east Salem side. So those key intersections, as you get close to the bridges, become the bottleneck, everything has to funnel through those. So, we tried with the travel demand model, we plugged in a new connection, and this was meant to be, what's the minimum amount of infrastructure that we could build to create a new connection? Because everything is hubs and spokes out from the existing bridges, when we create a new connection, the traffic patterns train, change dramatically. And so this was represented that. And what did that do in terms of relieving traffic in downtown? And it, and it definitely helped, it reduced the traffic on the existing bridges considerably. But we found that it didn't do, there was still a lot of congestion along Wallace Road, there was still a lot of congestion along Liberty and Commercial, and then those downtown, those Marion Commercial intersections around the bridgehead. So, we continued to look for additional ways to try to pull traffic off the existing bridges. And that's when we came up with these additional add-ons. Four B looked at, well, what if we build a new bridge and we make additional capacity modifications to the existing bridges? So it's basically alternative two A that we saw earlier, along with four A, building a new bridge. Four C took that once, one step further, a couple of steps, several steps further, I should say, in, in providing that direct connection with Highway 22, in that it pulled all of those, those trips and all the truck traffic and such that would need to normally have to use the existing bridges on that, kind of a free-flow viaduct that goes through West Salem, connects over directly with the Salem Parkway. It also, what the, the traffic engineers added were several additional capacity modifications in the West Salem area. You can see all of the gray, additional gray area where we're adding additional capacity to try to take the pressure off of Wallace Road and provide more parallel routes of ways to get traffic from West Salem to the, to the new bridge as well, to try to reduce congestion overall. So, four D is very much the same as four C that we just talked about. The main difference is in, is on the Hickory-Pine area, we pulled back, there was a one, we, we created this one-way couplet on Hickory and Pine that extended back to east towards about Fifth Street with four C. This alternative pulled that back and didn't extend it as far into the neighborhood as, as four C did. So it's just, it's almost the same, it's just slightly different around how far it penetrates into that Hickory-Pine into the neighborhood, is the primary difference.
Backwards and forwards on that?
Yeah. So you see the grayed area, how it extends to about Fifth, past Broadway into the neighborhood, we would extend the, a one-way couplet, basically, on Hickory and Pine.
Or we keep some.
Yeah.
Less impact.
So, four E, this is one that has since been dropped, but we developed this one because the, the only difference was it looked at shifting in, from a park impact standpoint, this one shifted that viaduct into the, out of the park and into the neighborhood. And we've since determined that, looking at the park impacts that were created with four C and four D, that those were not significant enough that we needed to carry forward four E, that it was better that we keep the viaduct in the park, and we would eliminate the, reduce, further reduce the residential impacts that this alternative would create. This is the final slide, this talks about the costs for, for those alternatives. It is a lot of money. That's, that's my presentation.
Excellent. So, I, I think one of the things, if I may, if you would go back to four D, I think one of the important things, Dave, if you, if you take an extra couple of minutes, is talk about how, how, you know, things were, from four A to four D, things were built, and it's really just for, for council to understand how, how this process got from four A to four D.
Right.
In fact, is, you know, in, in trying to address the purpose and need of addressing all of these traffic impacts over the next twenty years, you know, what all needed to be constructed, not just the bridge? So if you could kind of.
Right.
Just touch on some of the gray areas, just so council understands how we got there.
Yeah, so I skipped through that rather, rather fast. So, four A, as I said, what we realized is that four A was kind of the, the minimum, if you were just going to build a new bridge and connect it in with, with Liberty Commercial over here and Wallace on the other side, that that's, that was the minimum infrastructure. When you start to pull, in order to help reduce congestion on this lower end of Wallace, and let's say on the Liberty Commercial couplet area, and, as well as just, just trying to get the trips down, get, reduce that amount of traffic that has to use the existing bridges. With this alternative, we, we pulled off the, all of that direct traffic that's going to destinations, let's say, north, north and east of the bridges, within Salem or up to I-5 or wherever they're going, Silverton, Woodburn. This, this alignment, this alternative does that. It also provides additional connectivity on the West Salem side to take some of that pressure off by building a direct connection with Orchard Heights to allow that, so that not everybody has to come down and use Wallace Road to get up to the existing bridges, this parallel route that you see here, additional improvements. And these, they're gray because we're actually making additional capacity modifications over what's included in the city's plan, just to try to handle a little more capacity. So that was the goal, is that we, in, in doing, I mean, we didn't start out trying to build something as big as this, it evolved just through the nature of how can we, what's, what's the, how far can we move the needle in terms of reducing the number of trips that use the existing bridges?
Just want to confirm, Dave, of all the alternatives, one of the, one of the key data sets that we talked about and looked at was delay time. And in comparing, besides cost, besides impact to neighborhoods, and a host of other things, one of the things that we looked at was the delay time. In the EIS itself, it talks about no build alternative, the AM delay is six hundred and seventy-four minutes. So, I'm just quoting that from one of the charts here, but alternative four A seemed to not have as much of an impact on the morning delay as four D did. So each one of the alternatives, just want to, if you could speak to some of the other criteria that were used in terms of evaluating the different alternatives.
Yeah, and, and this goes back to, to the complexity of the corridor with, you know, the existing kind of hub and spoke system going right, all going right down across existing bridges. When we changed that to the new bridge, add the new bridge to the system, how the traffic has to redistribute through there. We struggled, I think, as a, as a group to find a measure that could summarize the, the system performance and how, how the, how, and vehicle hours of delay is what Councilor Clem is referring to, that's one that, one measure that we used, in terms of looking at, we had twenty-five some different intersections within our study area, within the, within the project footprint area, and we looked at the congestion, the, the volume to capacity that you spoke about, and we added up, once, what we did was, we looked at, once those intersections reached capacity, we, as an individual intersection, started adding up that delay that the, that the analysis, the formulas provide for us, and then that's how we came up with those overall vehicle hours of delay. Now that's not a measure that people can relate to in their travel periods, but it's one way that we, and, and for comparative purposes within the document, one measure that we, at a glance, gave you some sense about what they did in terms of reducing congestion.